Good evening and welcome to the November 17th, Brown, you gotta tell it we fixed that. It's really bad tonight.
Good evening and welcome to the November 17th, 2025 Combined Rescheduled Work Sessions of the County Commission, regular meeting as well. My name is Chair Brown, I serve as Chairman of the Board, as well as Commissioner of Urban Township. I would like to thank and welcome our viewers, and thank Spectrum, Cable, and AT&amp;T for making it possible for our citizens, for our television audience and live streaming audience. I would like to present your Gas County Commissioner for getting on my far right.
Alan Frayley, Chair of Township.
Good evening, Scott Sheehan, Gastonia Township.
Good evening, Kathy Coniger, Dallas Township.
Bob Hovis, Crevis Mountain Township.
Good evening, Tom Keeger, Gastonia Township.
Before we start, and before Mr. Hovis gives the invocation, I would like to read something, and then we're gonna take a moment of silence before that happens, but after that, Commissioner Hovis will be given the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance given from Commissioner Sheehan. "I want to take a minute to recognize the pain that many in our organization are feeling right now. This morning, we lost a young lady by the name of Mary Jolly. Was just 27 years old, she was a tremendous paramedic for our gyms, and also had been serving for five years. Mary died just trying to help. She went and was hit by a car on a freeway in Florida after she had pulled over to help a man that had been in a crash. It's hard at times like these, it's hard times like these, because words just don't do justice. But just to know that we are praying for Mary's family, for her friends, and all of her coworkers at gyms. We also appreciate all you've done, and we will miss you so much. We also want to let you know that we've got all our support, and her family has all our support, as we'll observe a moment of silence, and then Commissioner Hovis, and we'll give the invocation, followed by Commissioner Sheehan." So if you'll observe that moment of silence for Miss Mary Jolly. If you'll please stand.
If you will, please bow with me. "Gracious Father, we come here tonight recognizing individuals all over the country like Mary, who see something and take action. This was a stranger to her, but she used her skills and her compassion for others to render aid. Father, it's our responsibility every day when we see something to act in accordance. Father, continue to bless us with your wisdom, your knowledge, and use the gifts and talents you've given us so greatly and so freely, to be of benefit to others, and to recognize that we are not alone, nor are others who are in need. We ask that in Christ's name. Amen."
"Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Before Commissioner Keeger comes down to the podium to present award, I wanted to express some information. Last meeting, we had an appointment that we didn't know, something in our staff had pointed out, so we'll be making a new appointment tonight for the Board of E&amp;R, for the Chairman, that is the Chairman's call, like I said, we had that, and we missed some things. We also wanted to ask the Attorney to go back and look, because some of that was unconstitutional, some of the things we found after we found that out, but I do want to make that change tonight, so I want the Board to know we'll be making that change with that tonight, to rectify any situations that had been put into place. Commissioner Keeger, tonight, we will be doing presentations, awards, and certificates, but the first one is the Judge William Gasson Award Presentation. Commissioner Keeger.
Thank you. First of all, Cindy, you and your family, come up.
Tom, why she's coming, I'm gonna read this. "A very important part of the Board's mission is to encourage citizens' participation in city-county government, and the community involvement. In 1998, Gaston County Commission established award bearing the name of Gaston County namesake Judge William Gasson, from 1778 to 1844, to recognize those volunteers who have demonstrated exemplary commitment, dedication, and leadership. Since its establishment, Gaston County has honored 69 recipients, volunteers, for their services of Gaston County. This year, the Board of Commissioners is privileged presenting the William Gasson Award to one outstanding individual."
All right, well, with me, of course, is Cindy, and her husband Jeff, and the clan. And I've had the honor of working a couple of years with Cindy on the Parks and Recreation Board, for which she's being honored for her service. Tell me real quick, it's on here, how many years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years on our Parks and Rec Board, and she's been involved in an awful lot of the expansion of parks and renovations. I'll get to it now. Whereas Cynthia, Cindy Eisenhower, proud native of Dallas, North Carolina, is the daughter of Jack and Carolyn Maxwell, and is a devoted member of the Dallas Methodist Church. She's a graduate of North Gaston High School, Gaston College, and University of North Carolina at Charlotte. Cindy's been married for 42 years to her husband Jeff, who served as Assistant Chief of the Gaston County Police Department, among other titles. Together, they raised two sons, Jeff, known as Bo, and Jason. They're also the proud grandparents of five grandchildren, Hannah, Ian, Maddie, Charlie, Abbott, who she considers the highlight of her life. Cindy began her public service career in 1976 as a dispatcher with the Dallas Police Department. Four years later, she joined the County Police Department, serving in both patrol and special investigations. In 1985, Cindy joined the Gastonia Police Department, where she served for 25 years in a variety of roles, including as a sergeant in patrol, vice, and criminal investigations. She also became the first female officer in the department's history to be promoted to captain, leading both the patrol and criminal investigation divisions. She's also commanded the hostage negotiations team, and served as interim Assistant Chief. In 1999, she attended and graduated from the 199th Session of the FBI National Academy. Cindy contributed significantly to the law enforcement profession through her service in professional organizations. She served as Secretary for the Gaston County Law Enforcement Association, and the North Carolina Law Enforcement Women's Association. She also represented the Association on the North Carolina Training and Standard Commission, and was a leader in the NCFBI National Academy Associates, serving as Treasurer, Secretary, and later as the first female president of that organization. During her tenure as Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Cindy helped guide important planning and improvement efforts throughout our park system. Under her leadership, the county updated its comprehensive master plan, and advanced major projects at Poston, Dallas, South Point, Tryon, and the Bestinmer City Parks. These efforts have brought numerous improvements, including new playgrounds, restrooms, and expanded trails that will be enjoyed by residents and visitors for years to come. Cindy's insight and passion have strengthened our visitor economy, and supported the continued growth of Gaston County as a premier destination. As Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, she brought collaborative leadership, steady vision, and a genuine commitment to the well-being of our community. Her leadership elevated recreational opportunities, guided thoughtful planning, and championed initiatives that benefited both visitors and our residents. Cindy, the County Commission is honored to present you with the 2025 Judge William Gasson Award, in recognition for your exemplary leadership and your continuing efforts to make Gaston County a better place to live, work, and play. And it is my honor to present this to you, and to your family, and I'll have you say a word or two."
Well, I just wanted to say thank you. This is quite an honor, one that I didn't expect. It's always good to hear somebody recognize what you've done, and what you've strived for your whole life, so I'm really appreciative of the Commissioners and Commissioner Keeger for doing this. Thank you.
Commissioner Keeger, yeah, we'll do a picture. Where did she go to high school again? I'm sorry, I missed that part. What'd you say?
North Gaston.
I'm just making sure I heard that right. That's right. Sorry Jason couldn't hear that. It's okay. Congratulations everyone.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Squeeze it. The next proclamation, commendation, award certificate, Commissioner Keeger.
Thank you. Karen, are you here?
There you are.
Florida after she had pulled over to help a man that had been in a crash. It's hard at times like these, it's hard times like these because words just don't do justice. But just to know that we are praying for Mary's family, for her friends, and all of her coworkers at JIMs. We also appreciate all you've done, and we will miss you so much. We also want to let you know that we've got all our support, and her family has all our support, as we'll observe a moment of silence, and then Commissioner Hobus, and we'll give the invocation, followed by Commissioner Sheehan. So if you'll observe that moment of silence for Ms. Mary Jolly. If you'll please stand.
If you will, please bow with me. Gracious Father, we come here tonight recognizing individuals all over the country like Mary, who see something and take action. This was a stranger to her, but she used her skills and her compassion for others to render aid. Father, it's our responsibility every day when we see something to act in accordance. Father, continue to bless us with your wisdom, your knowledge, and use the gifts and talents you've given us so greatly and so freely to be of benefit to others, and to recognize that we are not alone, nor are others who are in need. We ask that in Christ's name.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before Commissioner Keger comes down to the podium to present award, I wanted to express some information. Last meeting, we had an appointment that we didn't know, something in our staff had pointed out, so we'll be making a new appointment tonight for the Board of E and R, for the Chairman. That is the Chairman's call, like I said, we had that, and we missed some things. We also wanted to ask the Attorney to go back and look, because some of that was unconstitutional, some of the things we found after we found that out, but I do want to make that change tonight. So I want the Board to know we'll be making that change with that tonight, to rectify any situations that had been put into place. Commissioner Keger, tonight we will be doing presentations, awards, and certificates, but the first one is the Judge William Gassing Award Presentation. Commissioner Keger.
Thank you. First of all, Cindy, you and your family, come up.
Tom, while she's coming, I'm going to read this. A very important part of the Board's mission is to encourage citizens' participation in city-county government and the community involvement. In 1998, Gassing County Commission established award bearing the name of Gassing County namesake Judge William Gassen from 1778 to 1844, to recognize those volunteers who have demonstrated exemplary commitment, dedication, and leadership. Since its establishment, Gassing County has honored 69 recipients, volunteers, for their services of Gassing County. This year, the Board of Commissioners is privileged presenting the William Gassen Award to one outstanding individual.
All right. Well, with me, of course, is Cindy and her husband Jeff, and the clan. And I've had the honor of working a couple of years with Cindy on the Parks and Recreation Board, for which she's being honored for her service. Tell me real quick, it's on here, how many years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years on our Parks and Rec Board, and she's been involved in an awful lot of the expansion of parks and renovations. I'll get to it now. Whereas Cynthia, Cindy Eisenhower, proud native of Dallas, North Carolina, is the daughter of Jack and Carolyn Maxwell, and is a devoted member of the Dallas Methodist Church. She's a graduate of North Gassing High School, Gassing College, and University of North Carolina at Charlotte. Cindy's been married for 42 years to her husband Jeff, who served as Assistant Chief of the Gassing County Police Department, among other titles. Together, they raised two sons, Jeff, known as Bo, and Jason. They're also the proud grandparents of five grandchildren, Hannah, Ian, Maddie, Charlie, Abbott, who she considers the highlight of her life. Cindy began her public service career in 1976 as a dispatcher with the Dallas Police Department. Four years later, she joined the County Police Department, serving in both patrol and special investigations. In 1985, Cindy joined the Gastonia Police Department, where she served for 25 years in a variety of roles, including as a Sergeant in Patrol, Vice, and Criminal Investigations. She also became the first female officer in the department's history to be promoted to Captain, leading both the Patrol and Criminal Investigation Divisions. She's also commanded the Hostage Negotiations Team and served as Interim Assistant Chief. In 1999, she attended and graduated from the 199th Session of the FBI National Academy. Cindy contributed significantly to the law enforcement profession through her service in professional organizations. She served the Secretary for the Gassing County Law Enforcement Association and the North Carolina Law Enforcement Women's Association. She also represented the Association on the North Carolina Training and Standard Commission, and was a leader in the NC FBI National Academy Associates, serving as Treasurer, Secretary, and later as the first female president of that organization. During her tenure as Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Cindy helped guide important planning and improvement efforts throughout our park system. Under her leadership, the county updated its comprehensive master plan and advanced major projects at Poston, Dallas, South Point, Tryon, and the Bestinmer City Parks. These efforts have brought numerous improvements, including new playgrounds, restrooms, and expanded trails that will be enjoyed by residents and visitors for years to come. Cindy's insight and passion have strengthened our visitor economy and supported the continued growth of Gassing County as a premier destination. As Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, she brought collaborative leadership, steady vision, and a genuine commitment to the well-being of our community. Her leadership elevated recreational opportunities, guided thoughtful planning, and championed initiatives that benefited both visitors and our residents. Cindy, the County Commission is honored to present you with the 2025 Judge William Gassen Award in recognition for your exemplary leadership and your continuing efforts to make Gassing County a better place to live, work, and play. And it is my honor to present this to you and to your family, and I'll have you say a word or two.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you. This is quite an honor, one that I didn't expect. It's always good to hear somebody recognize what you've done and what you've strived for your whole life, so I'm really appreciative of the Commissioners and Commissioner Keger for doing this. Thank you.
Commissioner Keger, yeah, we'll do a picture. Where did she go to high school again? I'm sorry, I missed that part. What'd you say?
North Gassing.
I'm just making sure I heard that right. That's right.
Thank you. Karen, are you here? There we are. Mr. Eaton, you all want to come up? This proclamation is to proclaim the month of November of this year as Family Caregiver Awareness Month. And who else we have, Steve?
Hi, Jessica Clark Rice. I'm the Adoption Supervisor.
I'll get right to it again. Whereas Gassing County is joining the state of North Carolina and the nation in declaring November 25, 2025, as Family Caregiver Month to honor and support the tremendous contributions family caregivers make each day to enable their elderly and disabled loved ones to remain in their homes and communities. Whereas caregivers often find themselves looking after their children and parents at the same time, and the percentage of families caring for older adults who need additional assistance is expected to increase substantially over the next several years. And whereas this labor of love can result in hardship for caregivers, including physical, psychological, and financial challenges, family caregivers should be able to enter into their caregiving role with the knowledge and insurance that they can call upon the business, faith, medical, and human service communities to assist with information, counseling, and formal service when needed. And whereas our businesses and companies can also contribute to families' ability to care for their loved ones in need by offering flexible work arrangements and paid leave when caregiving duties require employees to miss work. Employers can enable workers with caregiver responsibilities to balance work and family obligations more easily with such efforts. And whereas Gassing County's Department of Health and Human Services, Social Services Division's Adult and Aging Service Division, and many other area organizations are committed to increasing the awareness of caregivers' needs and continue to press forward in addressing these concerns. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gassing County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of November as Family Caregiver Month in Gassing County, and urges all citizens of this county to acknowledge and support family, friends, and neighbors are helping those who are in need. And this will be adopted later this evening. And Karen, I'll give that to you, and you all have at it.
Okay, thank you. I'll get the glasses out. Good evening. I'm Karen Creach, and I'm the Program Supervisor for the Center Daycare Services for Adults and Daylight. I want to thank the Commissioners for this proclamation for Family Caregiver Awareness Month. This year's theme was Plug Into Care, and that reminds us that caregivers should never have to go through this journey by themselves. Every day while working at the Adult Day programs, I see caregiving as an act of compassion that's often thankless, one that can affect a person's health, daily life, and financial stability. That's why it's important that we connect caregivers to the resources that can sustain them. Programs like the Adult Day Care, In-Home Aid Services, Respite Care, and Caregiver Support Groups are not luxuries, but lifelines. When you bring home a baby, people surround you with advice, and you have a general idea of what's going to happen, what milestones to expect, and you know that there'll be a time when this child becomes more independent. But caregivers don't have this roadmap. They don't expect to be in the position, they didn't plan for it, and they often don't know how long this chapter will last. The uncertainty makes strong community support essential. So today, as we accept the proclamation, we also reaffirm our commitment to plugging in, to showing up for caregivers in a tangible and compassionate way. Thank you for recognizing their dedication and for helping us elevate the needs of those who give so much. Thank you.
The next proclamation, commendation, award certificate, Commissioner Keger.
All right, and Jessica's up here already. Whereas each of us have a responsibility as individuals, neighbors, communities, and citizens of Gassing County to recognize that all children need love, support, and a safe and secure place to call home. And whereas for children who were born in the circumstances that cannot meet their ongoing needs, adoption provides healthy and loving families and environments which sustain children as they grow into confident and successful adults. And whereas families who choose the life-changing path of adoption make a meaningful and lasting difference in the lives of some of the most vulnerable children and young people in our society. And whereas Adoption Awareness Month, we celebrate all those adults and families who have welcomed a child into their hearts, into their homes, through adoption, and we express our profound appreciation for all who help make adoptions possible. And whereas the collaboration of both public and private adoption agencies, along with community agencies, religious organizations, businesses, and others should be recognized for the commitment to the needs of children throughout Gassing County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gassing County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of November as Adoption Awareness Month. And in honor of this event, we encourage citizens, community agencies, the faith community, local businesses, and others to celebrate adoption, honor these families, and turn attention to those children whose lives would be forever changed through the power of adoption. Together, we can work to support, sustain, and secure permanent loving homes for each and every child in Gassing County, and this too will be adopted later this evening. There you go, Jessica, and you have one.
Thank you, Mr. Keger. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Roten, Mr. Goldberg, and Ms. Buff. My name is Jessica Clark Rice. I serve as the Supervisor of the Adoption Unit for the Gassing County Department of Health and Human Services. It is my distinct honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Gassing County Department of Health and Human Services Adoption Team, and all the families that have extended their hearts and homes through the adoption process. I am honored and privileged to stand before you and share that since last November, our team has worked diligently to secure forever homes for 44 Gassing County children, and that number continues to rise. The Adoption Team and I appreciate the support of the Board and the ability to celebrate November as Adoption Awareness Month. On behalf of the children and families we serve, we thank you.
The next item, Commissioner Sheehan will do the retirement commendation to award the Service Sidearm and Badge of Retired Sergeant Monica Beckton.
Good evening. Whereas Sergeant Monica Beckton retired from the Gassing County Sheriff's Office on October 1st, 2025, with 30 years of credible service at the Gassing County Sheriff's Office. And whereas Sergeant Beckton has requested that she be awarded the Service Sidearm and Badge worn during her service with the Gassing County Sheriff's Office pursuant to NCGS 17F-20A and Board Resolution 259 dated October 27, 1983. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Gassing County Board of Commissioners that the badge worn by Sergeant Monica Beckton and her Service Sidearm Glock Model 45 be declared surplus equipment. The badge worn by Sergeant Monica Beckton be given to her in honor of her service with the Gassing County Sheriff's Office. The Service Sidearm Glock Model 45 be permanently retired by the Gassing County Sheriff's Office and offered to Retired Sergeant Monica Beckton at a price of $1. The Gassing County Sheriff's Office is directed to award Sergeant Monica Beckton with the Service Sidearm and Badge as specified and worn by her during her service to Gassing County, and in accordance with North Carolina General Statutes and Policy of the Board. Be it further resolved that the Gassing County Board of Commissioners expresses their sincere gratitude for the dedicated service of Sergeant Monica Beckton, and wish her the best in her retirement, to be adopted the 17th day of November, 2025.
Um, there was a time when I thought this day would never come. I started at the Gassing County Sheriff's Office in November of 1999 as a detention officer in the jail. Didn't know what I wanted to do, fresh out of college, not sure. So I started at the bottom, went to every class I could attend, under the direction of Sheriff Russell, who's no longer with us. Worked my way up, went to rookie school, and graduated in 2004 to become a deputy. I continued to work my way through the ranks, through the years, under some very good leadership. Sheriff Russell, Sheriff Kloniger, both mentored me through my career. I did every job in the jail that there is. I don't think there's one job in the jail that I didn't do, and I met lots of wonderful people, fostered lots of good relationships that I will never forget. These people are my family and will always be my family. So to be standing here 30 years later, it's kind of surreal, because when you first come into this, you never think this day's going to come. But thank you to my family for standing behind me all the nights that I wasn't home, holidays missed, weekends missed. Thank you all for standing behind me, and thank you Commissioners for granting my firearm and my badge. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Ms. Beckton? Mr. Kloniger?
Monica, I bring a message tonight from my husband, who is the retired Sheriff, Alan Kloniger, and this is what it reads. Monica, first of all, I want to apologize that I couldn't be there tonight. You are a wonderful, dedicated, and caring deputy. You did an outstanding job for the people of Gassing County. You did a great job for me. You were always loyal to me, you were loyal to the people of Gassing County. And thank you for all you did and sacrificed to make the Gassing County Sheriff's Office effective in providing public safety for all the citizens of Gassing County. Congratulations on reaching your goal of 30 years of service. Congratulations on your retirement. I hope you have a long and happy one with your family, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Is with great pleasure for the Gassing County Board of Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills, and energies in the service and appointment to one of our many boards and commissions. This type of service is the foundation for citizen involvement in our Gassing County government, and is helping shape the future of our community. We greatly acknowledge the work of the following individuals, and a certificate of appreciation has been forwarded to them. Travola Hall, Sean Zill, Health and Human Services Board; Nicholas Diavrea, JCPC; Brad Thomas, Lake Wile Marine Commission; Johnny Denton, Quality and Natural Resources Committee; and Greg Smith of the Workforce Development Board. The next item is Presentations. Lake Wile Marine Commission will now take a presentation. Mr. Ray Weber, Chairman of the Lake Wile Marine Commission, will now step forward. Thank you, sir.
Ray Weber, by the way, I'm the Executive Director of the Marine Commission. I got a promotion after Neil retired last year in October. I think you guys have seen this presentation before, or parts of it. Neil's been giving some semblance of it for a while. We provide these updates annually. I think the Marine Commission started back in 1988, and we do it just to kind of give you an idea of what we've been up to for the last year. Our mission statement is promote public policies, support regulations for the preservation of the lake, its wildlife, and the education of the citizens who are around it and who use it. So, I think I skipped a slide. The areas that we address are safety, pollution, water quality, water capacity, sedimentation, erosion, the laws and law enforcement, education in the environment. Again, this may be self-evident, but some of the things on here could be categorized together, pollution, sedimentation, but because sedimentation is such a big issue for the lake, we like to cut it out a little bit more on its own merits. The safety piece of this is primarily on putting buoys for North Carolina, the No Wake Buoy, which are the ones that indicate where you have to slow down. The buoys that we place, we place and maintain them from North Carolina, not in South Carolina. The rest of the buoys that are out there, and they're petitioned through us, we work with North Carolina State Wildlife to make sure that they approve them. If they don't approve them, doesn't matter whether, you know, we ask for them or not. South Carolina, they place and maintain all of theirs independently from us. It's worth mentioning that the danger buoys and the fishery buoys, no swimming buoys, those are also Department, or excuse me, Wildlife in North Carolina. Water quality, I think I skipped another one. I'm out of sync. So on pollution, historically, you've seen the slide that had something about river sweep in there. We used to manage the river sweep operation that has now gone to the Catawba Watery, Catawba Riverkeeper. We still work with them, we make a financial contribution to their efforts that they took it over several years ago, so I don't want to take credit for what they do. But I will report to what they picked up this October, and it was, you know, 222 volunteers, it was almost 300 bags of trash, and almost 9,000 pounds of debris. We did not make a presentation last year that included this, because much of the work of the river sweep was done around the hurricane time, and much of it was canceled. So I just want to let you know that most of the damage that was in the water is out. It's still ongoing, there's still, it's going to be years before that is all taken care of. And within the river sweep operation, we do solicit the businesses for donations, whether it's water, or grabbers, or whatever Riverkeeper asks for. And the counties provide the dumpsters, and we work with Riverkeeper to lobby for that heavily. So the water quality piece of our objective is mostly limited to doing a couple of swim guides within the Catawba Riverkeeper program. We subsidize those, and those are, with that, you have to get the water tested during the summers, that summer period where it's on, the water's tested, it's published by Friday, and it's out there. And we know that that's effective, because we have about 14,000 views of people looking at that during the summer. So it is effective, it's worth the money that we pay. The water quality reports that are given to us on a monthly basis look like this. Charlotte Water puts these together. You somewhat need a master's degree to kind of decipher them, but they're basically all these little green boxes, and they show the quality of the water, whether you've got some bad bacteria or bad sedimentation within them. And we publish that every month, and it is presented to us by Charlotte Water. I bring up the Inter Basin Transfer, because it's a topic that has, we're part of the process that they have to go through. You know, I think the short version of this is that we support the I think the short version of this is that we support the growth that these Inter Basin Transfers are and what they are, IBTs, is water that comes out of the lake and doesn't go back into it somehow. They petition us. We gave them our general support, but we came back to them and said, we would like to see in these IBT legislations that they limit the sedimentation, they control the rainwater runoff, and we would like to see dredging around the edge to, you know, this is capacity of the lake. And then we also want to see some corrective actions to prevent more IBTs in the future. We don't want to just keep coming back every 10 years and saying, what's the next amount of water that you need when you really haven't used the last one particularly effectively? There's also another IBT out there from Mooresville, and we answered the same way, which is generally, we support growth and we support the water, but would you please be conservative with your use of it? Sedimentation is our number one problem. It's been our number one problem on the lake since I've been coming to these meetings and since I look back in the records. It is a fact that, you know, we have to deal with. It's going to affect the clarity of the water, it's going to, the capacity of the water. So, it is something that we have to fight every day for. The sedimentation programs that are out there, Mecklenburg County, they probably have the strongest sedimentation and erosion, stormwater control measures. York County, I think after 2019 where they had a pretty big problem in development in New York County is probably the next. There's been some progress at Gaston County, site plan improvements, no permit, the permitting before rezoning, phase clearing. And then we were working with various municipalities to work into their agreements, some things that would help sedimentation and runoff. So, we've made some progress on that. More is probably better, but, you know, it'll have its own life. I can push all of the efforts of this back to my predecessor, Neil Brennan. He did a great job, and I will continue to work on it as I can. The other piece of this, we support law enforcement, and we have specific budget items for the various counties and where we can provide life jackets, chem lights. If you come across a boat in the middle of the night and they don't have their red lights or their white lights, you know, the officers, instead of sighting them, can give them lights that, you know, will basically get them to shore, you know, having the red and green and white. So, that's one of the things they do. We bought stabilizing binoculars for York County and CNPD a couple of years back because it really helps what they can see and when they can see it. We have $125,000 commitment to Gaston County for their boathouse. Neil would probably laugh at that because it's been going for three years. It did get reset about 18 months ago when they changed the location of it and it had to go through the whole FERC approval process, but it is still a commitment and we have the money in reserve for that. We believe that that, those checks will be written in the first quarter, second quarter. So, you know, we're ready for that when it happens. We spend a lot of time on rental vessel regulation, and that speaks to safety also. Back in 2024, we drafted a rental boat regulation and charter boat regulation for the lake. We did a tour of the various counties and said, you know, what do you, this is what we'd like to implement, what's your feedback? We got some great feedback from one county, and I'm standing there. There was some kind of overreaching in it and actually, so we pulled charter boat portion of that legislation, and I think a couple of you guys are familiar with it, because it was actually a federal regulation that the Coast Guard can take care of. It really cleaned up our regulation. I think you guys are still looking at some state level options for us, and in the meantime, we're planning on some level of implementation of this regulation for the lake in 2026. So, more on that, but, you know, we're still moving forward in that direction. We also provided private watercraft, personal watercraft insurance regulation to, basically, one of the things that we're allowed to do is to match legislation that might have been in one state and it isn't in the other state, and so we can make it a common law on the lake, just on Lake Wiley. And we did that with insurance requirements for personal watercraft. It was again, something that the, you know, various law enforcement guys said, you know, you have to, either it's on the lake or it's not on the lake, but you can't draw a line where the border is. So, that's what we try to do is normalize regulations on the lakes between the two states. Some of our education efforts that we've worked on, they're all the same. It's the Catawba Watery Water Management Group with the Water Academy. We do, put out a monthly newsletter. There's monthly meetings except for December. We attend the Mid-Atlantic Boat Show, and most of this stuff is just answering questions and providing information to the, you know, people that are out there. We participate in River Fest and Fork Fest. This year, because of the federal regulations on charter boat, we put together an education process for law enforcement, not for the community, but all the different law enforcements, and said, this is what the Coast Guard needs if you're going to report a charter boat on that. So, that was met with pretty good feedback. And we also have our website. But that's the education. It's not just for, you know, the citizens in the lake. It's, we're trying to start an education of the law enforcement community too. We do a clean marina program in South Carolina, but DNR in North Carolina takes care of it, so skip that slide. We also get involved with, in the environment on controlling the hydrola in, you know, whether that's a plant-based. And this doesn't happen all the time. They'll ask for, like Duke and some other folks will say, we need to help funding, either putting carp, sterilized carp in the water, and they'll eat the hydrola. Sometimes it's also met with chemicals. It's not something we do every year, but we budget for it every year. So, you know, it looks like we put carp in the lake every year. It's been two years since we have. Alligator weed, we have subsidized thrips, which are little bugs that are supposed to eat this thing. Found out that they don't eat enough and they die every winter, and hurricanes have a tendency to wash them away. We got to find a better answer for these besides just, you know, pulling it aside and burning it. But there's not a really good answer for alligator weed right now. I'm going to bring up Hurricane Helene. And basically, the one thing that I will say is we were actively involved with this, with Duke and Charlotte Water and all the counties in North Carolina and South Carolina. This isn't over. It's not even remotely over. That, the damage that caused by that is horrific. And quite frankly, right now, we have new channels and shallow areas that are all over that, that are unmarked and all over that lake. So, we're going to be working through that for years. The biggest kind of invasive problem we're dealing with is lyngvia. Lyngvia is a cyanobacteria, and the problem with it is it's a naturally occurring thing, but it hasn't moved this far north. You know, it can cause sickness in dogs and children. If it gets into the water filtration system, and quite frankly, you don't draw water from the areas that are affected right now, so that's not as bad of an issue. But it, when it does get into that, the extra carbon that has to be, that treats the water smell is terrible, terribly expensive, and it has a bad odor. We've been working with the North Carolina State Aquatic Plant Management System. Within this, there's a reference to Lake Gaston. Who cares about Lake Gaston? Well, they didn't treat it. That's why we need to care about it. We are treating it. We're on top of it, and we put treatments in the water between April and September, and this is a three to four-year process. Part of the problem with the hurricane was it moved some of the lyngvia, and we don't know exactly where it went, and it also didn't give us a good indication of how well the treatments were working last year, so that was a problem last year. And, you know, we found more parts of it this year, and we've expanded the treatment. Again, you know, Lake Wiley moved from four and a half acres of lyngvia to 10 Norman, 10 to 25 Mountain Island, 20 to 25. That's basically all of Mountain Island's being treated. And again, Gaston County is at, you know, 1,200 acres. The cost to treat this, and this is over three or four, has moved from 31,000 to 41,000 for Lake Wiley. Lake Gaston, they don't have enough money. They've got a $1.3 million bill. They can't, they can't fund that. That's why we've got to stay on top of this because it grows at an alarming rate. The good news is that the North Carolina has added lyngvia to their list of invasive species that can be, they can use their money for. Problem is, it's money that's been added to a big pool of problems. So, it's not the biggest help, but at least it's some help at the state level. We also have a steering committee with a bunch of our partners, whether it's Duke, the Marine Commissions of, you know, our Marine Commission, Lake Norman, Charlotte Water, York County, and NC State. So, we meet periodically to talk about what has to be done next year, what's new in the treatment plans. And it's specific just to lyngvia. The point that is probably, you know, I say the best for last or the worst for last, however you want to look at it. I want to put the bottom one up first, which is, we were, we have cannibalized the executive director salary. Neil didn't take any payment for it. I'm not taking any payment for it. But our costs, our administrative costs have doubled, our audit costs have doubled, our legal fees have tripled. So, we were hoping to come at some point in time for a rate increase. We haven't done one in the 10 years that I'm aware of. And it kind of got exacerbated last year because, you know, due to your budget constraints, you had to cut back, you know, some of us, and we got cut back, you know, $6,200. It's not a ton of money, and we were able to take that out of our reserves. That's not the problem. The problem is that by law, in both North and South Carolina, we have to have equal cost sharing between the counties. So, that means that we either have to refund, you know, York and Mecklenburg the $6,200, and we've got to figure out a way to get that money to us either next year or soon or in a special number. We're looking at the options. Neil and I have teed it up. We don't have all the options on the table. There is some flexibility between the state laws on how we can fund that, but I don't have the answers. I mean, the easiest answer is to, you guys to write me a $6,250 check, but that's easy for me to say. But at the end of the day, I want to tee up that scenario as something that has to be dealt with probably in the next quarter of how to handle it. And I won't do that without input from you guys. I just want to make sure that you're aware of the scenario as it's coming. So, that's basically, unless you have questions, my annual update. I do have some members of the Lake Wiley Marine Commission. One of them had to leave. His name is Bailey. He's a different Bailey than, you know, Jim, Commissioner Bailey. The current Chairman Smith is there, as well as the Vice Chair Yarman. And the other Lake Gaston County, Lake Wiley Marine Commission, Tom Bailey had to leave to pick up his daughter at the airport. So, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for the board? Mr. Keger?
Probably more for the staff. What can we do as far as trying to seek out grants to fill the void that we've had to do as far as cutting out the funding, reducing the funding? Are you aware of?
Grants are an allowable option. I know that in the state, I read the both state laws.
I guess when I'm asking staff, have we gone after grants for this area?
We have not.
I think that's something we should probably look into if there, possibly there's money there.
To me, it's, nobody's come to me from the state of North Carolina and said, hey, you're not compliant. And I haven't raised my hand and said, hey, I don't think we're compliant. We're working on the flexibility that's inherent within the laws that created us and by both state standpoint. So, I'm doing my research. Our attorney's doing it, and I want to make sure that you guys have some opportunity to take a look at it. I don't know that there's a drop dead timeline on this, but I know I'm out of compliance by the end of the year.
And just a curiosity question. When you did your slide presentation, the personal watercraft insurance in South Carolina said it'd be shared by the owner and the people renting it. I mean, is there, do they have to fight it out to see how much each one pays?
You know, it's interesting. They don't have a limit or a number on it. They just have to provide the insurance, you know, for both the renter and the rentee. And so, you're like, okay, so at what level? I'd love to say that I wrote that legislation. What I did is I cloned it. I took what they said and said, okay. How it gets enforced, basically, it's a great idea to catch somebody and say, do you have this? No. Okay. You need to go get this. And it's a conversation that the police officer or the county has with the renter. I'm unaware of any citations that have happened. I am aware of people who've been stopped and asked.
All right, thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
I want to just reiterate, it wasn't just the, it was all outside agencies that we reduced, so it wasn't looked upon as disfavor or anything. But I think when you say compliance, I mean, does Duke not take over that part of what's happening? I mean, or what are you, what is not in compliance?
The fees that are submitted by every county are $25,000 annually, and if they are not split an equal number, then we're out of compliance with the state. Because that's, the law says we have to split it equally among the counties. So, you know, it's where you get your revenue and how much you have. Realistically, one of my options, probably most likely option, is to refund Mecklenburg and York their $6,250 that we were short. I'm running a deficit as it is because I have some excess in my reserves, but that will burn away. $6,200 is not a big thing for us. $20,000, you know, three times that is a big problem for us when we're running a deficit. So, you know, we'll be, we'll be out of reserves, you know, probably within two years if we do that. And I can't not be in compliance because every year I sign a compliance sheet with my auditor that I'm not aware of anything that I'm out of compliance. I can't do that.
Thank you much for your presentation.
Yep.
Any other matters need to come before the board at this time? Seeing none, I will adjourn the work session. This concludes our work session for tonight. The regular session will convene immediately. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, you can remit those to the clerk, Donna S. Buff. S is for spectacular, 704-866-3196. I will now call the November regular meeting to order the approval for the business agenda. Do I hear any revisions to the business agenda or any items that need to be pulled? Seeing none? Motion made? That's correct. There'll be one more for that. Go ahead, Donna. So, we're going to pull that now for the non- All righty. I thought it was on the non-consent. All right, we're pulling to the non-consent agenda, which is item H. Sorry. Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Sheehan with item H being pulled. Any discussion? All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk? Sorry, you had it at the bottom. I apologize, Donna. Our next item is citizens' recognition. A portion of the board's agenda is to set aside the purpose of allowing citizens the opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. The comment period is not intended to require the commission or staff to answer any questions or provide a response. Questions requiring a response shall be answered as soon as possible through the county manager's office. Citizen recognition tonight be limited to three minutes. As I call your name, please step to the podium to state your name and address. For the first citizen to speak is Ms. Kate Driscoll.
Hi, my name is Kate Driscoll. Name of my full address? 1110 Linwood Road, Kings Mountain, North Carolina, 28086. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. Like I said, my name is Kate, and I am an animal advocate and a volunteer who is here to speak today on behalf of the residents of Gaston County, as well as the animal lovers. We're facing a growing animal welfare crisis and are in desperate need- We're facing a growing animal welfare crisis and are in desperate need of a county-funded TNR program. By my estimates, which I think are on the little bit of a lower side, I think there are roughly 24,000 free-roaming cats in Gaston County. Volunteer groups are doing everything they can, but we're really struggling out here. I personally volunteer for an organization called Cat Smart Coalition. In 2023, we fixed a little over 1,100 cats, and in 2024, we did 932. And that's just one organization out of a few that are in Gaston County. The funding and the work is all done from grants and volunteers, and while this is incredible work that we're doing, it's nowhere enough to slow the population growth of these community cats. Rescuers are overwhelmed, burnt out, and financially drained from constant pleas to help. In 2021, there was a TNR program called Operation Catnip that was proposed, but I, I think some work was done, but it had never launched. And without it, the litters keep multiplying, shelters are overwhelmed, rescues are overwhelmed, and taxpayer costs, you know, are, continue to rise. Gaston County spends millions in operating the shelter with approximately $190 spent per animal process. Cleveland County is similar in their spending and sheltering, and then much of this is driven by the preventable intake of unsterilized community cats. County-run TNR pilot targeting about 5,000 cats per year would cost roughly $250,000, which breaks down to about $50 per cat. And when done efficiently, if we get 1,000 cats that don't go into the shelters that come through the program, we could save nearly $190,000, which means that the program could almost pay for itself. You know, the, the reduction of cats coming into the shelters places less burden on the shelter, of course, and over time, if done properly, reduces the population of community cats as well as cats being relinquished to our shelters. So in the long run, it'll save us all. We're here to ask again for the county-funded TNR program to reduce the intake, save us taxpayer dollars, and stop rescues from collapsing under the weight of a problem that we cannot solve on our own.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda with item H pulled from the, motion made by Commissioner Brayley, seconded by Commissioner Sheehan, all in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The non-consent agenda, communications, the resolution to closing the government access channel to be effective December 31st, 2025. This item was tabled on 10/28/25. I will call on Mr. Adam Gobb, Communications Director, to provide a brief overview. Mr. Gobb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll pull up the slide presentation and get started. So this is a, as we talked about a little bit at the last meeting, this is a project that we've been working on for the better part of two years in terms of doing research into the effectiveness of our cable access channel. To provide some history, city and county came together not long after we started doing meetings here in this building to found and start operating the cable access channel going back to 1999. So there's a agreement between the city and the county. It's a, a local agreement, and it made sense when we were back in the late 1990s, when you had nearly 90% of U.S. households with cable TV. What we do with the cable access channel, we use it obviously to broadcast these meetings, any of the city of Gaston County meetings that are held in this building. Back during COVID, we, we did live broadcast of press conferences in here, so that's something that is available as well. And then if there are other different events that are held in this, this room, we certainly have the ability to broadcast them live. We don't, but we do have a five-camera setup in here that we can record different meetings in here and then have them available for playback as needed. We also have a bulletin board that we've used over the years to update folks on different department and municipal updates. What's happened with cable TV is we're now at a point where there's only about 36% of U.S. households that have cable TV. That's a recent number from the P Research firm that put that number out just this year, and about 15% of that is for satellite TV. So when you break that down and look at where we are in Gaston County, less than 30% of county households can even access the cable access channel because they would have to have either Spectrum or the AT&amp;T U-verse to be able to access it. So about 3 in 10 can even be able to, to get access to that actual channel. We did a community survey, and we did this over the past two years. One of the things that we wanted to make sure is we didn't skew the results towards people that were already more digitally savvy. So we sent it out with the property tax bills that went out each July. So we did this in 2024, did it again this past year in 2025. We had a fairly similar number of respondents, over 625 and 24, about 550 this past year. And what we found is only a handful of people are using the cable access channel the most for their local information, less than 1%. There's a cost to it. It's not a significant cost. So, you know, when we talk about cost savings, we're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're talking about roughly $40,000 in equipment. But there is aging equipment and software that needs to be replaced if we were to continue the channel. What that does, more than just the, the dollars behind it, is it's a staff burden. So Barry Martin, who runs these meetings in the back, he's our digital media manager, he has to come in on nights and weekends if the channel goes down. It happened four different times just over the course of three months this past spring. So he's having to be perpetually on-call to be able to come in and fix issues. And if it was one thing, we'd order a replacement part and get it fixed, but it's been a variety of different issues that are causing the channel to go down. And so you're just having to kind of deal with it as it happens and then, you know, fix it as it, as it comes up. It's also producing an inferior product. So most of what you're seeing on TV these days is in high definition or in 4K. The state law only requires the cable providers to provide us a channel in standard definition. So if you're to watch it, it looks like something out of the 1990s. It's, it's grainier, it's not as good a quality. That's because that's what's required. The cable providers will sell you the upgrade to HD, but we haven't ever paid for that just because we haven't seen the value in it. There's also duplication. So the live meetings are already being broadcast through our website. We use Granicus, and so that's available. You can get those live through our website, and then we stream it through YouTube, and then we share that out on our social media channels as well. And one of the key things about that is it allows for on-demand viewing of any of our programming. With the access channel, you would have to either watch it live or go on and see our programming schedule and then either set a DVR or plan to watch it live, or plan to watch it on playback. And a lot of folks have gone away from that. Their, folks are so used to being able to get things kind of when they want to, but that's an inconvenience that people aren't willing to deal with anymore. So for us, the request is, is pretty straightforward. We're asking to end broadcast of the cable access channel on December 31st, 2025. We would continue to record and broadcast all the meetings live, so it's not going to affect anything that you see here tonight. We would record all of these, and they would continue to be sent out through YouTube, through the website. And we would save money by not replacing the outdated equipment that's used specifically just to feed the access channel. We, we don't have it for any other purpose. And it also frees up some of Barry's time to help with more video production. We're doing a lot more video production. Commissioner Hovis at the last meeting had talked about some of the things that the school district's doing. They actually did that in response to a lot of the video work that we've been doing. And so some of the other entities around here are trying to play a little bit of catch-up. And so that's where we're trying to focus our time and efforts to be able to do more of the video editing, video shooting, and video production. One of the questions that Commissioner Hovis had at the last meeting as well, talking about the ability of the access channel to be used for emergency notifications. When we had the bomb threat that affected the courthouse and affected the DSS building across the street, we were actually not in a position to be able to add any updates because we physically have to be here to update the channel. So we don't have any way of being able to update it off-site. What we do instead is we work with emergency management to use a provider called Everbridge, and we basically send out text message notifications that are geolocated to wherever the incident is. So we can send it out to all residents. We also have the ability to either send it to all staff, or we can break it down by building in terms of who needs to get those emergency notifications. So those are the main things I wanted to touch on tonight. I'm here to be able to answer any questions that you might have and happy to get your feedback.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Brayley.
Adam, when would you anticipate us having to put the 40,000 in for the upgrades? I mean, how much longer could we limp along with?
So we've been limping it along for the better part of a year. One of the reasons that we're not, Commissioner Hovis had talked about the schools doing a lot more video. One of the reasons that we're not putting more video on and we're just kind of doing the bare minimum with the channel now is because it's going down so frequently. So we're just, we're trying to eke out as much of the last bit of lifespan as we can from the equipment. But realistically, we probably should have replaced it already.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Adam, the, you were, excuse me, you were talking about the presence being here in order to upload to, that's true for any of our media, correct? Does it all not originate here?
So if we were posting something to social media, we could do that from anywhere. We wouldn't need to be here to do it. If we were broadcasting something that was in this room, yes.
I, I understand the broadcast part, but I'm just saying your YouTube announcements and all that, it's not, that doesn't originate here in our video production area?
Some of it does, but we can do it from other places. We can do it from anywhere. We can do it from the administration building, and we can do it from our cell phones.
So with the uplink available, then we could still do the current cable channels as well?
I'm sorry, I don't think I'm understanding your question.
I'm trying to differentiate why one is available and one is not.
Right.
From multiple locations. That's, that's what I'm asking for.
Got it.
Is it fixed ISP that you broadcast from?
Right.
I'm trying not to get too technical.
No, no, no.
We're going to have to get, get an answer that I want.
Yep, yeah. Basically, we, we only have the ability to broadcast out of here. So we have to feed, basically, the, the piece of hardware is called a tightrope, and we have to be able to feed that to be able to go out to the cable channels.
And if we cooperated with the Gaston County schools, could we not, and we're not able to get our ISP up, could we not use their ISP to broadcast our urgent needs?
We could.
Okay. Just to try, the reason I say this is there's a, there's a part of our population that I feel like will be disenfranchised by us moving completely away from our two cable legs. Spectrum and AT&amp;T right now are spending significant dollars in Gaston County to expand their offerings to fiber, fiber, big time. And that's going to increase viewership. More homes will be reached because people are going to use the fiber for high-speed internet and their other augmented basis. So that's going to give it an opportunity. I personally feel like that there's, some seniors won't YouTube, they won't stream, they're not, they're not going to find themselves using that medium. I think we should explore in the year 2025, '26, this budget year, what we can do to improve our content so it's more user-appropriate and more user-desire to use it. It's a small price, in my opinion, less than $50,000 for us to pay to continue to use something that has reached many homes and has been used by many citizens in Gaston County for a period of time. I just think we're selling the citizens a little short on that, and that's truly how I feel. I've talked to a lot of people, I have a lot of people talk to me after my comments at the last meeting. I have had consultants and engineers, like Mr. Bailey always refers to, talk to him, but I've had many citizens who really wish that to continue on as, as a service from the county so that we help educate them and help, help make that in the forefront of what's going on with the county.
Mr. Keger.
Yeah, I agree with most of what Mr. Hovis said. I've got personal friends that, for one reason or another, when they started going to YouTube and all this, everything else that's out there away from cable, they're buying all these apps, and then now they're paying almost as much as they were when they were paying their cable bill, and they're switching back to DirecTV or cable companies again. And, you know, I'd like to follow, follow through on what Bob said, and, you know, let's take a better look at this. I'm really, you know, he mentioned the seniors. It's going to hurt the seniors. It's going to hurt those that, well, are technically challenged. But I'm curious, I want to ask you one question, Adam. I got a text in about two minutes before you finished the slide presentation, and somebody told me our meeting's not on. We haven't voted to take it off yet. Why isn't the meeting on?
The channel should be operating as normal. If there's a glitch with it, then...
And I've looked at it maybe a dozen times this week, and it's just blank. Nothing's running. At, you know, many, many times I've checked it, as well as the schools' channel on Spectrum, not AT&amp;T. But it's not on right now, according to a friend of mine that just texted me.
So we monitor the channel in the back. We have a subscription to Spectrum Cable, so if we weren't getting it on the channel, we would see it showing up back there, and that would be something that would be coming in. So I don't know if there's a problem with the feed that's, that they're sending out, but we can certainly look into that. But we're able to monitor it here because we do keep a subscription to Spectrum. If we had a problem with it not showing up, we would immediately address it.
Jonathan, will you look back there and see if it's on in the back? Is it on? Okay. I don't have it. You threw it on, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm good.
I guess my question, Adam, is we, we got this, I don't know what we were, five, 10 years ago when we had to upgrade this back then? And we continue to cesspool money into this. It's just like, it's just throwing it good after bad. What is the total number to keep this on until the budget is over for next year? Talking about June?
Yeah.
July, whatever, June 30th?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of ongoing costs, what we're paying right now is basically just to monitor that the channel's on, and so we're paying for a subscription to Spectrum. The piece of equipment itself is, is a $40,000 upgrade, but that would be up to the board to decide when we would purchase that, whether we would go and put it in our budget for next year and try to do it next year for the board's pleasure.
Could we go from today to June 30th, the way it is right now?
Not without the continuing hiccups in, in service that we have been experiencing.
Let's just say we have a hiccup. I don't want Barry coming in on his weekend. We'll just have it down, but I mean, he can come back on his regular time, correct?
Yeah.
The problem I have is it's like, we keep throwing money at this, and then all of a sudden, like you said, I mean, I don't know what's wrong with the quality of, I haven't seen it, I watch it every day. I mean, I, I love seeing myself talk. But I, I think the biggest thing about this is when we look at it, we do have seniors, but we do have options.
Right.
I don't mind, as I say, kick the can down the road, but if we can't get there, then it really doesn't get us. So if I don't want to spend more money on, just keep throwing it, and, and we have to, because it becomes obsolete as soon as we get it in. And so...
We, to, to your point, we, you know, throughout this process, and we've had a number of conversations with different folks about this, we, we met with Spectrum representatives, and when we told them that what we were considering, they kind of shrugged and said, well, there's other people considering that, too. UNC Charlotte's looking at getting rid of theirs, and it didn't surprise them that that was the route that we were looking at. They didn't really even try to hard sell us on trying to find a way to keep it, to be honest with you.
I want to offer a different than what's on the paper because of, I know we're just going to end up tonight. If we just put this to go, no more money until we get to the budget to see what goes on. And the reason I say that is because if we don't, then what happens is the same thing as if it's 3-3, if it's, if it's a fail, whatever. It, it's still the same because we're going to be kicking the can down the road to get to the next budget cycle. I want somebody, I want everybody to feel good at this diast about what's going on about that because I think we're really stuck on whether we're going to spend a lot of money over the next little bit on something that we may end up putting it out. It's already in the budget for this year. I mean, about having, yes, sir?
I agree. I, I think we just limp along the rest of this year and then let Matt do more of a detailed analysis. and then let Matt do more of a detailed analysis for us and decide what it's going to actually cost. Make a decision whether we want to put it in next year's budget. But I'm not looking, I don't want to spend 40 more thousand dollars on it right now.
With the, Mr. Chairman, the $40,000, does that take us to 4K?
So what we produce internally is already in high-definition. We have to basically downgrade it to send it back to Spectrum and AT&amp;T.
Because our uplink doesn't support.
Because, well, our uplink would support it. They basically won't support that unless we pay them extra money. The state law only requires them to broadcast it in standard definition. And so that's what they ask us to downgrade the feed and then send it to them.
That's so that any television can view it, not just high-definition television.
Yes, although any television, I mean, you're going to have to be looking...
It's nothing to do with equipment quality.
Yeah.
So one last question. I guess this will go to one of you two. The excise tax that is put into for franchise fees, do they, they pass through for us, right? They pass through to the county to get that money, correct? You look at it...
We'll have to look into that.
I think we need to charge them a fee of $40,000 to take that franchise fee. I think that'd be, anyway, we're going to vote on this, we're going to go ahead. Do I have a motion to approve it as to discontinue this cable channel on December 31st, 2025? Do I have a motion? Yeah, sales anyway. We'll move on. Mr. Fraley. The next item is to adoption of the ordinance maintaining criminal enforcement in certain existing county ordinances. This is the second reading. Tonight it can be passed by the maj, by, it can be passed by a majority vote from what's happened. Do I have a motion to approve the adoption of the ordinance maintaining the criminal enforcement of certain existing county orders?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? This unanimous, Madam Clerk. Congratulations. The next one is the county manager authorized the sale of the 1904 Dallas-Cherville Highway, Dallas, North Carolina, the Mary Ellen Nelson Center, to Partners Health Management for the sum of $2.6 million. Parcel ID number 170825. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? All disapprove? It is 5-1, Madam Clerk. Item was pulled from the consent agenda tonight. Item was pulled, it was item H. I will submit to Commissioner Fraley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to make a motion to postpone or table to the December tonight meeting. More details have to be discussed and ironed out before I think we should vote on this item.
Second. Seconded by, motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Keger. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. That has been tabled over. Appointments, Commissioner Fraley.
None denied, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sheehan.
None, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Klonegger.
No appointments.
Commissioner Hovis.
I'm going to continue with the Deuceg as well, sir.
Mr. Keger.
Reappoint Vivian Ekelberger to the Council on Aging.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis, all in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right, it's going to be very interesting here for the next few minutes. I have a lot of paperwork. I want to go back in the full board vacant appointment. I want to put the equalization review reappointment requested by Mr. Kimberly Wyatt. Wyatt. Miss Kimberly Wyatt. Let me get that, shoot. And I'm going to do that separately because of the next one. So seconded by Commissioner Hovis, all in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Next is the Fireman Trust Fund. Twelve appointees, as indicated on the attached list, you all can be made aware of in one single motion. Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. I have one appointment also to the Board of Equalization and Review. We're going to appoint this the chairman, chairwoman, Maureen O'Keefe. Maureen O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. I have one chair appointment for, also for the Central Island Council of Government. Commissioner Bob Hovis requested his beautiful appointment there. Beautiful appointment, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Beautiful appointment, all in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Reports.
None, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting, I have completed my visits to all of our county departments. The last ones did include animal care and enforcement, telecommunications, GMs, and the Family Justice Center. I want to sincerely thank all of our department heads and staff for welcoming me into their departments. That was a great learning experience. Also had the pleasure of attending the Threads of Hope event against domestic violence last week with Commissioner Brown and Klonegger. And if you have never heard Commissioner Brown sing, come next year, get your ticket, you don't want to miss it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Klonegger.
I enjoyed attending the Threads of Hope fundraiser and thanks for all who put that together. I also took another tour to the Department of Health and Human Services under the new director of Sharon Myers. I had attended all the 60-plus departments earlier, which took a while to do that for me. And so I congratulate you for getting that done so quickly. Also, I attended the Veterans Day Parade, which I participated in that. And I also attended the program in Dallas afterwards. And then this year in Cherville, they did a mural dedication, a veterans' mural dedication in Cherville that I attended also on Veterans Day. That ends my report.
Mr. Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the opportunity to attend, along with Commissioner Klonegger, the Chamber of Commerce and the Gaston Business Associations, economic outlook sponsored by Carimont at the Gastonia Convention Center. They had the same economist who's been there now going on. This is her third appearance. Very lengthy, very detailed, very well-attended, I might add as well. We're very fortunate to be where we are in Gaston County with all the wonderful activity of development. It was great to hear what's going on both in the nation and also here regionally. We have a very actively engaged business community that has brought many opportunities to citizens of Gaston for employment, and we're very fortunate. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Keger. No. Thank you, sir. I'll go real quick. Want to thank everyone for the Threads of Hope, the domestic violence. We all should be after any suppression of anything in domestic violence. It has no place in our, in our homes or anywhere in our county or any community, to say the least. But it was a wonderful event. I thought I sang rather well. If you haven't known and you want to see, you can always give a donation to domestic violence in order to not hear me sing. And that's available at their website as well.
It's kind of like the polar plunge. $10 to attend, $20 not to jump. So...
I also, just since y'all want to hear me sing, right quick, I will start singing. Veterans Day Parade with the cast of all of you guys. Thank you, Ms. Klonegger and Sheehan. We were out there, rather cold that day, but it was a celebration of our veterans. Thank you to all the veterans that are here tonight, but also in our community. The veterans are probably the biggest part of what we do and how we should be thankful, along with our first responders, law enforcement. You heard tonight, unfortunately, the passing of one of our own in first responders. And it's hard when you go to these things and you see these people. And I think the one thing that gives it a presence, I'm so proud to see a veteran who wears their hat. And they wear it, if you ever notice, they wear that thing with more pride than anything you've ever seen. I did have the thrill until it was interrupted by the bomb threat. Commissioner Hovis and I, along with Mr. Roten, were meeting with the governor's office. Poor guy, I don't know if he felt like he was being ambushed when he got here. But a super-nice gentleman and wanted to thank him for his time when he came that day. Was just informing us on some of the things. We talked about some of the leverage we're having in the Gaston County school system with, what do they call that?
Low-wealth funding.
Low-wealth funding. And we were talking about that and have that sent back up there.
Calculations.
The calculations is an old formula, and we've been pushing against that. You know, this board has pushed everything we can to try to lower taxes and still give the same amount of services that we're providing throughout. And it becomes a hard, you know, again, we saw tonight a gentleman who saw where he was cut from our services and things. But, you know, it's part of what we do and what was happening here. We continue to try to find ways to help others with more of the things we're doing. Also, Steve, please, we, come on up here, please. We have done a lot to partner, and I want to say thank you to Steve, Ray, and Robbie for the things you guys did. Can you tell us about the cold weather shelter and where that's going to be?
Yes, so we are partnering with the City of Gastonia to provide resources and existing resources and support to...
To the city, along with, they're contracting out to the health that Gaston to provide the cold weather shelter when it gets below, I believe, 32 at a local Baptist church. I'm blanking on the name.
Unity.
Unity Baptist Church, yep.
Thank you for you guys participating.
Before Steve leaves, I'd like to share with the board. Received a complaint from a citizen in southern Gaston County about property that he owns at lakes on his property that had been impacted by one of our package treatment plants that's operated by a private entity. And in doing so, I was kind of surprised to find out that they're an NPDES permit holder. In other words, they have the ability to direct discharge into a creek. There's really no notification that's given to the public. There's no notification given to the Department of Health. Municipalities that operate NPDES permits require to advertise their noncompliance and advertise all this, where these individual package plants are. And we have a developer that's looking at making subdivisions in Mount Holly that will have three of these independent plants. So I brought Mr. Eaton's attention. He brought his staff in. And we had a conference call with the North Carolina Department of Water Quality. Kind of enlightening, I thought. And I got to play the bad cop. Steve and them were good cops, but I was a bad cop because I have been involved in wastewater discharge permitting in the city investment city in my former capacity in the textile industry. I understand more about trash and waste than any single individual in Gaston County. I don't know what that tells you, but it's not necessarily pretty. But with that, we challenged the state to do as robust with their private NPDES permit holders with their release of NOV, Notice of Violations, that they don't currently do. And I think if you received any of that information, a plethora of information was supposed to be coming to...
Yeah, it's starting to come into environmental health.
It's starting to come in now. And that is another thing that we, the Gast, we Gaston County, whether we do it through Spectrum and AT&amp;T channel or whether we do it through our YouTube analysis or whatever, that's another thing that we, Gaston County, need to put out there so our citizens understand how this happens. Because this gentleman had a 23.8 acre farm with a lake on it and had cattle. And he had the wrong kind of discharge going into it because it was improperly operated. I say that because we, the seven of us, have the responsibility to put information out there to the citizens. That is, that is as much a part of our responsibility as passing policies and doing budgets and all that, to make sure that we're totally transparent. Steve and his staff do a wonderful job, but if the state doesn't let us know, then we don't know. So we need to hold the state accountable to the same levels that they hold municipalities accountable.
County manager Roten. Can I report tonight? Esquire Goldberg.
Nothing to report, sir.
Well, I wanted to give a great congratulations to Bean and Strux. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight. It means a lot to us to see our shareholders in the, in the audience. Any other matters need to come before the board at this time?
Motion to adjourn?
No, sir. This concludes our meeting for tonight. Our next combined work session is a regular meeting Tuesday, December the 9th, which is, please bring gifts because it's my birthday, at 6:00 PM here in the Hollybee Gaston Forum Junior Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, remit those to Donna S. Buffett at 704-866-3196. Good night, gentlemen.